All right, good evening. The time being 7:02 on September 13th, 2021. Corum Planning Board being present. Call this meeting to order. I'll just ask and remind everybody to please make sure you're speaking into the microphones. Clearly, our recording secretary is not here this evening. She'll be doing all the minutes off of the recording. So anything we can do to help make sure she isn't missing any of it or straining to figure out what people are saying would be helpful. Thank you. All right. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, Approval of Minutes from August 16th, 2021.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2021 as written.
All right. Have motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none. Move on to Agenda Item B, Two Town Planner's Report. We did not have one in the package for this week. B three, 20 Carter Street Bond Release Request. Do we have anybody here for 20 Carter Street? So we have the request to release the bond. I'm not aware of any holdups at this point. And Mr. Sadwick put a letter in the package saying that there isn't anything from the town perspective. So entertain a motion to release the bond of $10,000.
Show moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And moving on to Agenda Item B four, 1123 Chandler Street, Approval Not Required, A&R Plan. Do we have anybody here for 1123 Chandler Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jim Dangore Jr., with Shay Dangore Nelson and Bill Ricker. Thank you, gentlemen, and good evening. There is an A&R plan in front of you. Very simply, Mr. Cox owns 118 Gray Street, that's wholly in Bill Ricker. Mr. Ripley owns 1123 Chandler Street. A portion of that is in Tewksbury. The two gentlemen got together, purchased the lot in between the two of them. It has an address of 120 Gray Street. And all but 38 square feet of that falls outside of Tewksbury. You see on the Mylar that we've gone to, Bill Ricker has endorsed the plan. We're now seeking your endorsement. And we're not creating any new building lots. What we're doing here is these two gentlemen are going to split this lot, as you see on the plan, and then they're going to deed one half of the lot to 118 Gray Street, the other to 1123 Chandler Street. And they will, all the lots will be merged in perpetuity. So they're increasing their frontage, they're increasing the lot area, they're not creating any new building lots.
All right. Start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site. Lot is a funky-looking lot, that's for sure, being so long. But I have no problems with the A&R as requested, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Delaney?
I don't have any problems with this.
Mr. Fowler?
All set.
Chair is all set as well. Do we have a motion on endorsing the A&R plan?
Show moved.
A motion to endorse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Good luck.
Should I pick up the file tomorrow? Pick it up tomorrow? Yes, I'll put the note on here. I'll sign it at the end and then they'll take care of it.
Excellent. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item C, 45 Ninth Street, Family Suite Special Permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
No move.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. If you just state your name for the record, the floor is yours.
My name is Philip Schrepler. I'm an attorney with Finer and Nicholson. I represent both Robert and Tina Lucas, who unfortunately, due to family matter, couldn't be here this evening. They are the owners of 45 Ninth Street, and they'd like to add a family suite to their existing home so that their son can move in to take care of them in their old age. The addition will consist, will be connected to the main home by a common room, and will meet all required setbacks. The project as a whole consists of 908 square feet, of which 768 square feet will be the family suite. The remainder will be a connecting common space. Because the addition exceeds 800 square feet, we're asked, we're here today to ask for a special permit under Tewksbury Zoning Bylaw 3410, Paragraph 2, to allow for the construction. As you know, when granting a special permit, the board must weigh the social and economic impact of the modified structure. As you can see from the plans, the addition will make the whole structure more aesthetically pleasing, and will also advance the goals of Section 3400 of the Tewksbury Zoning Bylaw, which seems to exist to support the increase of multi-generational families living together we're seeing throughout the Commonwealth, and the social benefits that those kind of living arrangements seems to generate. In addition, the family suite will not only increase the value of the home itself, but will also increase the value of the surrounding structures, representing an increase of tax revenue, and also an increase of benefit to the town as a whole. For these reasons, we ask the board grant our special permit application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll start with Mr. Delaney.
I'm still trying to figure. I'm all set with this.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
I'm all set. I like the use of the common area between the two. Gave you a little more elbow room.
Okay, sorry.
It gave them some more elbow room, to be honest with you. And it looks good, so I'm all set.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also visited the site at 45 Ninth Street, and had a couple of questions. Is the home on sewer presently?
I believe it is.
It's one of my requirements, it has to be on sewer, so if it's not...
Yes. I know for a fact it meets all of those requirements. It is on sewer, and the connection will also be.
Okay. So when we vote tonight, we vote to approve or disapprove. But the building inspector in the town of Tewksbury will be the person who will be the final eyes and ears on the site, so he'll have to make sure everything is in order for him when you do pull the permit and get the final approval by us. So, but with that, I mean, I just wanted to comment that the plans were very thorough, and thank you for that. Makes our job a little easier. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. The chair is all set as well. I'll just note to the board, in the package again, Mr. Sadwick had sent us the letter asking for the inclusion in the special permit, the language regarding the foreclosure sales at the end, so when we get to, assuming we get to that point, make sure we add that in. All right. Open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing none. Bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the family suite special permit, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion to approve the family suite special permit at 45 Ninth Street as written, with the caveat of...
All right, so then it includes then a termination of the special permit and all rights granted thereunder in the event of a foreclosure sale of the premises for which the special permit has been granted by a mortgagier or any lien holder of record with priority over said special permit. So that'll be added in. So we have that motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Two King Fisher Road, also a family suite special permit. Motion to waive the public reading?
No move.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Sir, if you just state your name for the record, the floor will be yours.
My name is Peter Conlon, and I reside at Two King Fisher Road. And my wife's parents are in their 80s, and they've sold their house down in Long Island so that they could move up with us, and we'd like to build a suite as an extension to our house, so that we can take care of them as best we can, up until we can't. The reason for the extra 1,000 feet is so that we can put another room and bedroom in for some time in the future when we might have to either have medical help and live-in help, or we might have to use it for possibly hospice.
All right. Start with Mr. Fowler.
Very good plan. I like the way you laid out the garage and the elevators.
Yeah, my mother-in-law has RA, and she's, for the most part, ends up in a wheelchair most of the time. She can't walk more than 10 minutes, so we wanted something that, so she didn't have to go outside in the wintertime to get into a car.
That was good. Very good. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Sewer at the house?
No, we have septic, but in our building plan that we submitted to five builders, we've let them know that they have to hook up our house and this to sewer. And we've had a plumber, one plumber come by so far. I'm expecting more plumbers to try to evaluate it.
It's a standard question we have to ask, you know.
Aye.
So another standard question I'm going to ask you is the total square footage for this particular family suite is going to be?
1,000 square feet.
1,000, okay. Great. As I mentioned earlier, the building inspector will be out, and he's our eyes and ears on the field, so even though we may approve or disapprove tonight, he will be the final say when he gets out there. That's it. So with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set as well.
Chair is all set as well. Again, I'll just make the same note on that new language. We'll add that in when we do the motion, presuming we get to that point. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on Two King Fisher Road? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adopt. A motion to approve. First, we're going to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to close first. All right. So I got a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the family suite special permit?
Motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve.
With the caveat?
With the additional language of...
We should name this. I don't want to read it all the time.
Yeah, I guess we'll call it the foreclosure clause from here on out.
Yep.
And it will be the standard, as just put in the last one from now on, in all family suite permits going forward. All right?
Yep.
Sounds good. So with the foreclosure clause added, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Going for the threefer. Agenda Item E, which, Five Florence Avenue, which is also a family suite special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
No move.
Motion made, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Do we have anyone here for Five Florence Avenue?
Motion to lay it on the table.
Yep. So we have a motion to lay Five Florence Avenue on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So for anybody, again, I'll imagine no one was ready to comment on this one either, but for anybody watching, so we're just going to hold off on this. So if there's any public comment, it'll be if and when we pull it off the table later on in the meeting. Maybe somebody's just running late, or maybe they went in the other room first, I don't know. But we'll see what happens. Moving on to Agenda Item F, 967 975 Main Street, Tewksbury Funeral Home LLC Special Permit. A motion to waive the public reading?
No move.
Motion made. A motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. If you both just state your names for the record, the floor will be yours.
Sure. Hi, my name is Mira Cousins. I'm with Civil Design Consultants.
John McDonough, Tewksbury Funeral Home.
So we're here requesting a special permit and site plan special permit for the proposed parking lot improvements at 967 and 975 Main Street. So I'll quickly go over the existing conditions, and then we'll talk about the proposed conditions. So our site is Tax Map 47, Lots 74 and 75. We have a combined area of .61 acres. We have approximately 163 feet of frontage on Main Street and 165 feet of frontage on Dewey Street. The site is located within the commercial zone, the Town Center Overlight District, and the Groundwater Protection District. So there was a mixed-use building that was previously located at 967 Main Street. This was demolished earlier this year in preparation for this project. So what we're proposing here is to maximize and expand the parking lot for the funeral home. The proposed layout provides 40 parking spaces. The applicant is also proposing 460 square feet of building addition, and that would be located at the northwest corner of the existing building. The site will be accessed via a single curb cut on Main Street, and the goal is to maintain that existing curb cut on Dewey Street. For stormwater management, we are proposing porous pavement that would be located within the drive aisle of that new parking lot, and that's proposed to capture and infiltrate stormwater for the majority of the site. As you may be aware, the town issued an approval at this location back in 2015 for the construction of a shared parking lot for the funeral home and the previous building that was located at 967 Main Street. We are requesting eight waivers, four of which is to maintain the existing conditions. Would you like me to go through those eight waivers, or it was included in the package?
Do you need them read off?
No, I'm all set. I've seen them.
Mr. Delaney, you all set?
I'm all set, yeah.
Nope.
And we did receive comments from DPW on Friday. The comments were pretty minor, and we'll address those comments and submit any revisions in the coming days. And so with that, happy to take any questions.
Very good. All right, we'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're going to review the comments in a couple of days from the IDR?
Yep. So he submitted on, he sent that over on Friday.
Actually, I apologize. Just one clarification, because I have the note in here from Mr. Sadwick about amending the application?
Yes.
To include the site plan special permit, you know, under the TCOD?
Correct.
It doesn't read that way, so was that already handled?
That was handled, yep.
All right, so just let the record show that, so we're in here, we have a site plan, we have a special permit and a site plan special permit, that that application was amended, I think just for housekeeping. If we could just have a motion that accepts the amendment as well as waives any additional fees necessary. Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. I apologize. Mr. Vitale, please continue.
Okay. So you're going through the TCOD special permit, correct? That was one of my questions, because Mr. Sadwick did recommend that, but there was no discussion on that, or no decision on your end in our paperwork, so...
Okay.
So you are going that route?
Correct, correct.
So great, okay. So I had a couple of questions. I see in the plans that you're relocating the gas meter and the AC unit on the side of the building. Where are they going?
That's something we'll coordinate with the utility company.
Okay.
Probably to the side of that addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not that easy to relocate either one of those, because there's a ton of work involved, and you just, you know, that's the main gas coming into the building and so forth, so...
Yeah.
Okay. So I've been to a number of wakes in the past. Will you have parking attendants at the funeral home for all of these funerals and wakes that are going to be there?
So anytime we have a wake now, and moving forward, we have three additional staff members hired just for the wake, which is, you know, everyone knows what a wake is, but it's just the nighttime calling hours, whatever you want to call it, four to eight. For funerals, quite a bit more. We have usually about five additional staff hired for funerals to maintain, you know, the order of the procession and kind of direct people to park their cars before COVID valet, but now we don't really do that anymore. So yes.
You know, you never know how many people are coming to these wakes and funerals, so I don't know if there's going to be any overflow necessary, but any plans on that, if you had overflow?
Overflow parking, we have a handshake agreement basically with the bank across the way. If they're not open, we're able to use that parking lot. And then there's another group home off to the right that we take care of their snow for them, and they allow us to use their lot. In bigger wakes and funerals in the past, we've parked on the street, but this, the whole reason for this addition is the parking.
Sure.
It becomes an issue real quickly.
Absolutely. I mean, I've been to a number of wakes there, and they have had the parking across the street and so forth. I just didn't know if that was still in effect with this new owner's involved, so... But, but then, I'm all set right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In your special, in your request, you had your list of waivers, and my first one is the sign. Moving the sign from where it is now presently to pretty close to the driveway. We don't have a picture of the sign to show how tall it is, or how much area is going to obscure, so can you tell us?
We don't have that right now, but that's something we can bring to the board when we have that finalized.
I, in terms of moving the sign, I feel like a more honest answer would be replacing the sign. It wouldn't be the same sign moved over, you know.
Regardless, no matter what sign you put next to the driveway, our concern is someone pulling out to Main Street to looking at a sign.
Yes.
So now they can't see if someone's coming the other way.
That makes sense. We'd be open to wherever the sign needs to be, safety first, without any issue. The sign is something that we kind of have to have. It's not something that's part of our...
Absolutely.
So we'd be open to any suggestion or laws regarding where the sign should or has to be.
There are some, in some cases, I mean, I think a good-looking sign is very important for any business. But if you put a plant around the bottom, and the plant is three feet high...
Sure.
That also obscures vision looking down the highway.
Yeah, absolutely. In the past year, I've learned how difficult it can be to get out onto Main Street, so we need to keep those visibility areas open.
Did you request a sign permit also?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, so you're probably going to have to do that. As part of it, just arbitrarily moving the sign to a new location...
Yeah, we haven't got that far yet. In terms of where exactly it should be, I don't think, I haven't talked about it with my brother or my dad.
To Mr. Fowler's point, though, to have us waive it, having never seen it, and without the accompanying signed special permit...
Okay.
Is going to probably be problematic.
Okay.
That's the only issue. If it was just a matter of dealing with, granting it for the sign as is...
I'd like to just do that. I think this is a very good package. Tremendant, very well done. There were only a couple of dots, I mean, a couple of things that I want to question. If I get the right answer, perfect. So I would rather be able to approve this so they can go on with their construction, and not hold it up because of a sign that they may not have for a month?
You just want to condition this one on...
They can bring it in at a later date for the sign. Is that all right with you?
I think so, yeah. I mean...
I mean, that way you can move.
Right.
Yeah, the thing with us is we want this dirt parking lot to go away as fast as we can, you know.
There you go. Okay. Okay, we're all set on the sign. The town engineer just talked about the porous pavement at the driveway. Have you done anything to rectify his concern with water sheet flowing out onto Main Street?
What I was proposing, what I was thinking, was talking with Mr. Hardeman, maybe beefing up our O&M plan, add more maintenance frequency of the porous pavement for vacuum cleaning.
That sounds good, but it's only as good as, from you.
Yeah.
But it's only as good as the person that's maintaining...
Correct, right.
You know, the vacuum and cleaning, cleaning. This is a wild curve probably, but sometimes I've seen them put pavers at the driveway entrance, or a rumble strip at the driveway entrance to break it up, and that way you don't have the water flowing out, and it gives, there's no ponding.
Right.
What's your thought about that?
That's something we can look at, yeah.
All right. Then we're not going to get this done then? No? Okay. Would you have to have that on a plan?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so...
We have to do revisions.
I guess my wish for you wasn't going to come true.
[laughing]
All right. I think I'm all set for now. Yes, I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, well, one of my first questions was going to be the sign. You know, I'd like to see where the sign is going to go. The maintenance of the porous pavement, okay, are you going to have somebody there to take, you'll have somebody there to take care of it, like to clean it and so forth?
Correct.
So it keeps working the way it was designed?
Exactly.
Okay, and one other thing I have is a question of the landscaping. Is there, like, I know you have a fence down in the back. Is there something else that you can make it look, I don't know, a little bit better than what it's going to look?
So we are proposing trees along the western side of the parking lot.
Okay.
So we are proposing, we show here six blue spruce trees that provide some...
Okay.
Landscape.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Yeah, I mean, with the exception of, you know, some of your outstanding issues, I don't have any specific issue with any of the waiver requests. Again, we'd have to, one way or the other, we'd have to condition the sign on then seeing the signed special permit, unless somehow you get it included in the time between now and the next hearing, and that, you know, we'll assume that everything's all set when it came in, but otherwise, I'm fine with Mr. Fowler's idea of conditioning it. But you are going to have to then come back with the signed special permit once you have an idea of what it's going to look like, where it's going to go, so we have an idea, any effect it might have on anyone, you know, that way everybody has a chance to take a look and make sure it's not going to block anything.
Sure.
I mean, I don't think anybody here has any issue with you having the sign, or working with you to, you know, grant anything you need to do so, so long as it, you know, it's not an encumbrance on anything.
Okay.
Otherwise, I think the rest of them are pretty much between, you know, you guys getting squared away with Mr. Hardeman between now and, say, the next meeting. I think, as Mr. Fowler was kind of hoping, that we could move along a little quicker. But on the plus side, we're back to our kind of every-two-week meeting schedule now, so it's not nearly as long a wait as it would have been over the summer. So if you get all your ducks in a row, hopefully we get squared away theoretically, you know, for the next meeting. Obviously, subject to public comments after this, but otherwise, I'm all set. Mr. Fowler?
One other question. I think it was Mr. Hardeman mentioned something about the two parking spaces, one on the western, if I'm saying, you know, the southern side and one on the western side, being in close proximity to one another, that they might be a problem with bumping into one another. Have you been able to do anything with that?
We might end up losing one spot because of that comment.
Very good. Thank you. So just, you know, let us know where you end up on that, that way when we do the waiver, because we're gonna put a number in there.
Correct, yeah.
So if it does change. All set?
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this hearing? Seeing none, if the board doesn't have anything further, what is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue the hearing?
All right, so we got a motion to continue to 7:05 on our September 27th meeting. There are a motion made. Do I have a second?
Chairman, is that enough time for you, two weeks?
Yeah, I, I think so, yeah.
Sure?
Yeah.
The signs, anything else, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, all set.
All right, so we have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We'll see you at the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item G, zoning bylaw amendment, public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Sadwick.
I think you had the hearing, was the hearing notice provided?
Yep.
To the board members? You're probably gonna have to waive that, the reading of the notice before we start.
All right, so do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Sadwick?
Yeah, Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager here, on behalf of the Town Manager for this zoning article. And there's also a second zoning article regarding the map. Just to give a little bit of background on this article, the groundwater protection district amendments are part of post-superfund closure at Rockwell's landfill, which is known as the Sutton Brook disposal area. And the town is required to implement institutional controls to protect the public's health with regard to the closure. During, during the hearing, we've worked closely with the EPA and Mass DEP regarding amendments to our zoning bylaw for these institutional controls. And there are representatives virtually here with us from the EPA and DEP, if there's questions that may come up. Going through the groundwater protection district, this is something that the town put in place back in 2002 at the request of the State Department of Public Health to protect the wellfields at the state hospital. And now what we're looking to do is, is to add certain restrictions over at the Sutton Brook disposal area, which would include a plume area around the landfill and a buffer area. So more specifically, the proposed town meeting article would establish these districts. And it would include all of the existing language of the groundwater protection district, but then add specific prohibitions and limitations in that plume and buffer area. There's amendments to the definitions because we're defining the plume and buffer area. It adds the location of those two areas into the text of the bylaw. And then adds a list of prohibitions in the plume area and a list of uses that would be allowed by special permit in the buffer areas. It adds notice requirements to the EPA and DEP for activity in the buffer area. Enlists activities in the buffer zone, which would require a licensed professional, licensed professional for oversight and sampling. And then there were some other minor changes that were made, changing, we had terminology in there, is SPGA. The Planning Board has been the special permit granting authority since 2002. So this is just pulling that SPGA out and putting the Planning Board in there. And that was because we were using a model back in 2002 that was given to us by DPH. So that's pretty much the amendments of the text. I don't know if the board had any questions regarding it.
Mr. Fowler?
Oh, I thought it was pretty easy to understand, Stephen. The red line strikeout worked great. Brings us back to, how come we didn't do that all the time? I know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, but no, that's very easy to understand, and I couldn't see any problems with it at all.
Mr. Delaney?
I'm all set.
Mr. Fratelli?
Yeah, looks good, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set too.
One question, Steve, does that have to go through town meeting as well for approval?
Yes, and that's, so this, this public hearing, did the Planning Board would make its recommendation to town meeting? And then town meeting is on October 5th, so we'll be presenting it at town meeting in October.
All right, thank you.
The chair is all set. Are you, are you taking these separate?
It's up to you.
Does it matter?
No.
I mean, do I have to read, do I have to waive the reading of this? All right, so why don't we just do them together?
Okay.
So if you want to present the other piece, and then I'll open it up to the audience.
The other piece was the map itself, and I'm not sure if that was included in the package, that's, I'm sorry for that. I do have copies that I'll provide, board members.
Thank you. Next, Stephen.
The, like I said, the text changes included the definition of where these buffer zones and plume areas would be. We, we also, just for the board's education, sent out notices to everyone, all of the property owners that are in those two areas back on August 23rd, informing them of the public hearing this evening. And also my point of contact information, if they had any questions. And there was only one resident that had called with a question on it.
Did you, was the question resolved?
Oh, yeah, it was, they, they just wanted an understanding of how it would affect them, and it had minimal impact.
So basically, the, the, just for everybody's purposes, the, the only reason for the map is really just to draw out what the, the actual writing is saying.
Correct.
So they're not two different things, they're not doing anything different, they go hand in hand.
Correct.
That's, that's the only reason, I just want to clarify for anybody who isn't sure. All right, so any, no comments about the map, I presume, correct?
All set.
All set. So with that, open up to the audience. Does anyone in the audience have any questions, comments, or concerns on this? All right, seeing none. Mr. Sadwick, Sadwick, anything else to add?
Nope.
All right, so we have a motion, I'm sorry, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
All right, motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to a recommendation to town meeting on the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, we have a motion, I mean, do we have a recommendation?
Make a, Mr. Chairman, make a recommendation to endorse the proposed zoning bylaw amendment proposed tonight.
So we have a motion to adopt the two zoning bylaw amendments presented this evening. We don't have numbers or anything, so we'll just go by what was presented tonight. So we have a motion to recommend adoption of both of those. Do I have a second? Motion made and second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item H, 461 Main Street, Barlow Signs on behalf of Dick Insurance Agency, signed special permit. This one is a continuation from previous.
Hi, good evening. My name is Brandon Currier. I'm here for Barlow Signs, here with Brian Dick, representing Dick Insurance Agency.
Can you just bring the mic maybe a little closer? Because we don't, like I said, we don't have our recording secretary with us this evening, so she's gonna get everything off the, the recording, so.
No problem. I'll start over for you, so everybody can hear this. Good evening, my name is Brandon Currier from Barlow Sign, here with Brian Dick, representing Dick Insurance Agency. We're seeking a special permit approval from section 5232D, numbers two and seven. As you can see, do you all have the drawings in front of you? Do you guys all have the drawings in front of you of the sign?
Yes.
Which should be in my map, it's probably one of the last pages. As you can see, the drawings are already processed, upgrading the entire sign to be more modern, clean-looking, and efficient. As technology progresses, the use of EMCs is becoming more and more common. These boards will allow our customer the ability to safely change this message from season to season. It'll also allow him to promote custom material, not only to attract new customers, but to also have messages up for existing customers. Having this EMC similar to the Wamisit lanes will not cause any visual distractions to passing motorists, especially since we're not gonna have any animation, motion, or flashing. This EMC is also equipped with a daylight sensor, which actually allows for the lumens to be adjusted, depending if it's a cloudy day, if it's a bright day, and so forth. So that will cause, so that will reduce any distractions that can be come by from motorists. We're planning to have multiple changes throughout the day, for the hours, and get our messages out there with maximum efficiency, like our great neighbor. During these difficult times for all, we're just seeking ways to, to increase business and, and pass our messages along. And I'm not sure if you guys know, but there's been a lot of some more recent studies for EMCs and how the human brain processes information. It actually processes 60,000 times faster than looking at actual plain text. And after three days, people seeing some sort of an image or a grouping of images, they're, they are able to retain 65% more of that info compared to the 10 to 20% of actual plain text or copy. So again, we're not looking to have any content to be animated or flashing, no distractions to motorists. Messages will simply fade on and off. So to recap, we're just seeking special permit approval to allow a full-color EMC to be installed, updated to this updated bylaw sign. Thank you.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess one question I had from Mr. Dick was, what are you planning on advertising on the board? Curious.
Yep, great question. We have additional services that we're bringing in-house. For example, we do onsite registry work, so plates, plates while you wait, things like that, that we would post to motorists that would come by the shop, so.
Great.
Just to publish.
So the sign is the same sign as presently there, correct?
So the sign that's currently there, we are updating it to have this new face with new LEDs with inside, and then we'll be adding the EMC below it.
Talking about dimensions-wise?
Dimension-wise, it's actually going to be a little bit smaller.
Small, correct.
Because we're pushing them together.
Okay, I'm all in favor of helping a business in town, and I have no problems going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Delaney?
The sign that you're gonna, the new sign?
Yes.
You're gonna put it underneath the sign you have there, and that's where it's gonna be located?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm all set.
Mr. Fowler?
Hi there. Is, this shows two different signs.
On the top right-hand corner.
Which part is it, is going to be the, the LED?
Yes, so the top-hand right corner, that's a sign that's existing, and the sign that's in the center, that's what we're proposing.
So the message board will be both of these signs?
Nope, the message center will be at the very, very bottom. So you'll see the white section, you'll see the blue section, and then that dark section there, that's where the message center will be.
So the finished sign's on the bottom-left corner of your sheet?
Oh, okay.
Same as the existing, it's the existing size, standing within the two.
Same footprint.
Same footprint.
Got you. Could you do me a favor, come up here and show me what part of this is gonna be LED?
So this section.
I left that stuff out in the car.
It's black area here, right here. If you look right here, this is a filling.
This one here?
Yeah, the only thing I was concerned about was going.
Well, same spot.
Doesn't say that.
All set.
That's a lot different. Thank you.
All set. Mr. Fowler, do you have a list of the waivers for this?
Oh, it's the waivers?
Well, you're, you're, you're putting this on a lot that's smaller than would normally be required.
Yes.
As well as, and I don't have them all in front of me, so typically if you bring this in, you bring it in with the list of the waivers that you're asking us to grant.
Okay.
Because you couldn't have this sign.
Yep.
On that lot otherwise, so you, you need to tell us which ones of the, of the, which ones of the sections you're trying to waive.
Okay.
For us to be able to do that.
All right.
So I know it's not, I just was checking with Mr. Fratelli to make sure it wasn't in the pot of the package I didn't bring in, but you're gonna have to have those for us, so.
That's okay, I briefly referenced on it in the very beginning, I just said number two. So number two is the building's public entrance to the business is located at least 25 feet from the street. And as well as number seven, the electronic message board letters will be amber color only with black background. So we are requesting full color, and the building is closer than 125 feet from.
So one, two, and seven are the only ones you need?
One, I believe, is site of over 10 acres of land, so I don't think it would be one, it would be two and seven and 10, yes. Unless I misreading number one.
Are you, are you on a business, are you on a piece of land that's over 10 acres?
Oh, no, we are, I'm sorry, I was reading it wrong, so we are under 10 acres, yes.
So one, two, and seven?
One, two, and seven, correct.
All right, so I'm gonna open up to the audience, why don't you just take a look through there again, just to make sure that you're hitting the, all the ones that you, you're sure you're gonna need, because otherwise you're gonna find out you're gonna be coming back in here. All right, so with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this hearing? Seeing none.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fowler?
I wanna wait till they're done.
I believe that's correct, yes.
My question to you is, have you met with the building inspector to discuss this, the sign?
Our permit manager has reached out and has taken care of all of the proper steps necessary.
And did they come back with a list of what would be needed?
We have the, they, they didn't say that they would do a formal denial, but we got a email back with highlights from the building at Tewksbury-Dash Math. And the two sections that they highlighted were section seven and section 10.
Okay, all right. Just making sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I noted as well, so it would be sections one, section two, seven, and 10.
So what is section 10?
10 is, section 10, the Planning Board may waive items one through seven upon finding a special circumstances as determined solely by the Planning Board.
Okay, that's just our authority to do it, so. Okay. Very good. So you're still really, it's one, two, and seven, you're not asking for a waiver of 10, that's just what gives us the ability to do it.
Correct.
So, okay, so we're back to one, two, and seven.
Right.
All right. All right, so we have no other questions, comments, or concerns on the audience, and the board has any other further questions, comments, or concerns?
All set.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So first, as to the waivers?
Right.
So do I have a motion on the waivers?
Motion to approve the waivers one, two, and seven.
Okay, so we have waiver, a motion to approve waivers to 5232D, sections one, two, and seven, with the board having found that this sign is in the best interest and the detriment is not beyond its benefit to the town. And just so everybody has, it's, that one is on the size of the lot, two is the located 125 feet from the street, and the seven is on allowing it to be in color and not limited to the amber only, as some of the signs in the past have been. All right, so I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the signed special permit itself.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve the signed special permit as submitted, with the, with the, I'm sorry, with the dimensions as shown on the previously submitted plan.
Correct.
So I have a motion made, do I have a second? I have a second. Motion made and second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, moving on to agenda item I. The applicant for agenda item I, which is 330 East Street, has requested that the, this be continued to our 10:04 meeting. In accordance with our new, don't continue things too many times without getting any information. The petitioner has submitted a letter explaining what they're working on and why they need the extra time. So if the board is fine with that, we could continue this to, or entertain a motion to continue this to 7:00 PM on October 4th, 2021.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so we have a motion made and second, and all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. With that, we're at our next meeting, two meetings, sorry. Moving on to agenda item J, 24 Pleasant Street, site plan special. Moving on to agenda item J, 24 Pleasant Street, site plan special permit, special permit for the Town Center Overlaid District and Groundwater Protection District, continued from our previous meeting.
So Steve, we're meeting the 27th and the 4th?
Correct.
The place in the overall?
Yeah.
Well, we're back to two a month now. Okay, so it's two weeks and then, but it's a week out for the, next.
Yeah, but it had to be because of the time.
Because of the holiday?
Or in town meeting. There's always a reason.
All right, once everyone gets situated, if you'd just state your names to the record, the floor will be yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant. I have with me at the table Doug Lees, who's the engineer in charge, and Ken Cram, who has done the traffic report, is available for any questions relative to that. Mr. Chairman, just as an initial introduction, since the last meeting, there are revised plans, and just, we'd like to point out that one of the issues that came up at the last meeting, the abutter had asked for an eight-foot-high fence rather than a six-foot-high fence. We did receive a report from the town indicating that the planning board did have the ability to waive the six-foot limitation and grant an eight-foot-high fence, and the plans as revised do show an eight-foot-high fence for the benefit of the abutter, and just for the record, we'd like to place on, you know, before the board, a request for the board to grant that waiver, that they have the rights to do so as determined by the, by the planning office. I'll be turning this over to Mr. Lees, there's a letter from September 9th from the town engineer. Most of the comments indicate that there had been a review and a response, and that it was accepted, above, really the only outstanding issues would be for wastewater treatment, that, you know, Doug will go further into it, that whatever is required, we can take care of, but he believes that the, the trigger for it is a major site, and that we wouldn't qualify as a major site, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Lees at this time.
Hi, thank you, Doug Lees from Land Engineering, and we did get the review letter from the DPW, you know, 25 comments, and the first five appeared to be new comments, he did not receive a copper stormwater report, with the first submitted, we did submit it to the town, but it got lost somewhere between planning and his office, so I think the first five comments are out of, the review of the stormwater report. The first comment is, is simply that there was a depression along the lot line between the site and the gas station, right in this area, right now with the water ponds, and it's part of the development that the pressure's getting filled in, we're putting a building there, so, little grass strip, about 15 feet along the site, is flowing overland to the gas station, so we'll do a little swell in there to keep that water from going right onto their parking lot, to keep it on site, so that's a simple update to the plan. The second comment was about the volume of runoff for the roadway, I had done the peak rates and the stormwater report, and made sure that we weren't increasing the peak rates of runoff from the site to the roadway, but we were actually increasing the volume for the two 10 and 25-year storms, not a lot, and actually, the front half of the roof of the existing Sycamore Hall wasn't being collected and put into the recharge under the existing design, so we're gonna put gutters up and collect that and recharge it, and that will take care of that comment, so once we do that, we'll be decreasing the volume and the peak rate to the drainage in the street. And the third comment is one that Attorney Plunkett was referring to, is actually the stormwater treatment, under the major land use stormwater treatment, in the town stormwater management bylaw, you're required to provide calculations showing phosphorus removal. This project is a minor project under the stormwater management bylaw, because the site's only 35,000 square feet, so it doesn't meet the threshold. That being said, we're providing a stormwater treatment chamber, and they do provide treatment, and I'm just corresponding with them to get the actual numbers from the manufacturer, so we are providing treatment for the phosphorus, I just don't know what the number is, I don't know if it's gonna be 60%, but it's almost irrelevant because the regulation doesn't apply to the project, but we'll provide them with the information when we get it, showing what we actually are providing. And the next comment was, we originally did these plans in 2016 for the bank, and at that time, the town came out and witnessed test pits, so we were just got a little, our numbers confused as to which test pits were which, between me and Randy back and back in 2016, so that one's all set with the elevation to the water tables, the stormwater treatment system does meet the separation, it was test pit four was the one that we did on the site, so, that one's all set, I spoke briefly with them about that, and I'm gonna get them the actual paperwork from back in 2016 to confirm it. So those were the, their comments, Attorney Plunkett said we did increase the fence to eight foot, and the abutter also questioned a second catch basin, to ensure, in case this one got clogged up, we have a catch basin on the most part of the parking lot, and the whole parking lot, you know, slopes to one spot, so really isn't a good place to put a second catch basin, but what we did was put two grates on the catch basin, so we have two catch basin grates on top, so slices much area, so that will help if it gets clogged up, again, it still becomes a maintenance issue, but where it's a private apartment building, there should be people on site to maintain, you know, not on site, but yeah, it goes around to different buildings to maintain them, so it's not, if it comes to town, you should like the road catch basins, but it was a good observation, but usually do put double catch basins in a sump, but I did, I'm glad you tried, it sparked my attention. We did relocate the dumpster, as I'm not told you at the previous meeting, right across from the fire truck around, and I did provide a new plan for the fire truck turning, that was in the plan set, I don't have a very chance to see that, they wanted to see the turning maneuvers coming into the site, so we did that, it shows that the fire truck can make the turns in and out of the site, and the trash truck pretty much follows the same route. So what's changed, there was a reduction in the total parking on site from 24 spaces to 22, we took out two spaces to make room for the dumpster, 22 is what was required, yeah, 22 is what was required by the bylaw.
Any additional?
I think that's it, relative to the responses to the September 9th town engineer letter, if the board has any, if you want to break it into segments and address that, or?
Let's just do traffic and then, because I can't guess what may or may not come up from some of the audience, so it'd probably just be easier to do both, and then open it up to the audience.
Okay.
That way we can catch if there's something to do with the site itself, or if it's traffic, we'll have already discussed it, and we can do them both at once.
Sure. Okay, I'll turn the camera, and I ask him to go over the details of this report.
First, it's glad to be back. Second, I'm not used to being on the same side with Mr. Plunkett here. Anyhow, we did the traffic impact study, which I'm sure everyone has read with great gusto, it's a very small project, I watched the video from the last hearing, and as Mr. Johnson adequately indicated, it's really a net increase of about three units of residential housing, but we went through the whole process, we followed the state guidelines for the preparation of impact and access studies, we did new counts in March of this year, we adjusted them for both seasonal and for COVID, we used the 2018 counts, which are pre-COVID, from the elementary school study to help adjust our volumes, we ended up adjusting our AM volumes up about 47%, which is a significant increase, but it was only about 20% give or take in the evening peak hour, which is standard process that all us traffic engineers have been doing since the pandemic began a year and a half ago, plus now. We looked at the future planning horizon, obviously, we included the new elementary school traffic in the study, and the background growth rate, I think we used about a 1% growth rate, which was confirmed with the regional planning agency. And we, we did do, you know, as part of our accounts, we went out and we counted the existing driveway, and the existing units generate very, very low volumes of traffic during the peak hours, we only counted one car coming out during both the morning and the evening peak hour for the existing units that were there, and we're not gonna be generating a heck of a lot more traffic when we do all 11 units, plus, we, we did some projections for the 600 square feet that are gonna be the historical society's office space, and all said, you know, we're talking, at the end of the day, seven to nine addition, you know, peak hour trips during the morning and evening peak period, now, remember, trip is a car coming in out, so when I say seven, that means two coming in and five going out in the morning peak, and five coming in and four going out in the evening peak, not a significant number, and before I came here tonight, I sat and watched the intersection again, and counted, I actually counted the cars on the site at various intervals between four and six, and it started out with six cars on the site just after 4 o'clock, went down to, and a boat trailer, I gotta add the boat trailer, went down to five, and then it was as high as nine just before six, but at 6:30, it was only eight vehicles on the site with the boat trailer, so you can see in that short two-hour period in the evening, that not a lot is happening on the site right now, it's a lot lower than the IT would suggest for traffic generation, but, you know, a lot of people probably, a lot of us, you know, I'm in the office every day, some people, MassDT, for instance, they're still working remotely, so it's, 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 I think it comes down personally to personal preference, whether you wanna work at home, whether you're vaccinated or not, that's not the argument, it's just personal preference, so, we looked at the proposed site driveway, which is just about across from Town Hall Avenue, we're not gonna have any significant impact on the intersection with the traffic we're generating, coming in and coming out, hardly changing, it doesn't change the level of service, but you do the math, and the calculated delay goes up by like .8 seconds, and no one in this room is gonna be able to perceive a difference of .8 seconds at the intersection, and similarly, at the intersection, which is to be improved finally, not necessarily a result of the new fire station project, but they're gonna be upgrading that signal, changing one of the movements, the right-turn movement from East Street that continues north on Main Street, that's not gonna be under signal control as well, so it avoids that merge section just north of the intersection. I don't, I saw the concept plan, I just don't know when that's going to be implemented, but with what we're gonna generate for traffic, even taking, closing the driveway that we have right now on Main Street, which is really close to the intersection and should be closed, I'm, you know, particularly at signalized intersections, you don't want a driveway really close to the intersection, because it just, someone waiting, even if it's just one car sometimes, you know, it can block, you know, the northbound traffic at that location, so, that's a brief summary of the traffic study, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, so any questions from the board on the traffic?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So do you foresee any issues for residents coming out onto Pleasant Street, being able to get out okay, with traffic and because of the traffic on Pleasant Street back and forth, schools?
The volume of traffic that's coming out is so small, no.
I understand it's small, but I'm saying, even if there's one car, how long is he gonna have to wait to get out, or do you think he's gonna have to wait at all?
I don't think he's gonna have to wait much, keep in mind, the, the unsignalized highway capacity analysis methodology for unsignalized intersections is extremely conservative, I have done numerous intersection counts and studies where we've counted intersections, unsignalized intersections, but we've also, for the key leg, which is the, the minor street approach, we've actually measured the actual delays and vehicle queues, and when we compare it to what the model indicates, the model is oftentimes significantly higher than the actual observed delays, but in this case here, the model indicates we're gonna operate with anywhere from 17 to 14 seconds of delay for a car to make a left or a right turn out during the morning and evening peak periods, so it's gonna be even less than that.
Okay, so the plan is to put one of those checkboxers, or whatever you call it, cross path, cross hatch lines on the roadway?
To do not block the intersection.
Yeah, do you think that's gonna work?
It worked in Haverhill, I'm on, I'm, I'm still on the Haverhill Traffic and Safety Committee Commission, and we've recommended that to a few locations over the years, and it's worked in those locations, and, you know, a couple of those locations are not too far from a signalized intersection.
Okay, so the plan is, if I'm coming down Pleasant Street, and the traffic is backed up, I can't park in that cross hatch thing, I have to stop?
You're not, correct, you're supposed to stop before it.
And who's gonna monitor that?
Tewksbury Police.
Yeah, okay.
If I could, that was a recommendation of the traffic review engineer when we came in for the bank, around this project was, is, I'm not sure if the permits expired yet, with the tolling period for the whole emergency, was or is permitted for a bank, and at that time, we had the two-way entrance where it is now.
We had an exit on Main Street, too.
With the one-way exit on Main Street, we also had 519 vehicles per day proposed, we're now proposing 48, we had 42 vehicles per day proposed in the morning peak hour, and now we have seven, and we had 85 vehicles per day proposed in the PM, peak hour, and now we have nine, and again, the permit was approved, and may still be, I'm not sure what the tolling period, you know, it's gonna expire over the summer, but, yeah, I'm extended, so.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thank you for your answers, Tori, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Well, with a, with a team like this, how can you go wrong? No, I think the plans speak for themselves, Attorney Plunkett articulates the fine points, and obviously, Mr. Cram, it's, you're the best.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure to work with you all these years, all these years.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, Kevin Hardeman's letter shows that all the comments or whatever are addressed, and they're all good, the only thing I haven't seen, or didn't see, was the fire department coming in, in other words, if they come into the, can they get into the lot?
It's the last page.
And then they, then they're gonna have to back out onto the street?
AJ. It's on the last page.
AJ, it's the last page of the plan.
So the day appro, I mean, I know you have it on the plan, but did the fire department approve that, and said it was okay?
Yes, I checked with Alex this morning, he hadn't talked to me, talked to him, and then he said, he sent me an email saying he saw Lieutenant Zorki in the hallway, and he said, everything on the charging plan looks good to him.
Okay, we haven't seen that, and last time, Mr. Plunkett, if you recall, there was a letter that came in, but we didn't, we didn't have that as a board.
This afternoon.
Mr. Zorki said it's fine.
So in other words, fire department can drive in, do what they have to do, but they're gonna have to back out, because there's no way for them to turn around?
Oh, they can turn around inside the street.
I'm missing something.
It's on? Yeah, there's a, an area right here that's paper block, so the fire trucks can pull in, and they can back up there, that's to, that's to remain clear, there's no parking signs, fire turn around, and then they can pull back out, so the fire truck doesn't have to back out.
I'm all set.
My question has been answered.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, so the only one, and just, again, so, so, the one that I think people will be more concerned about in terms of the turn, it's not the coming out, I mean, honestly, that becomes an issue for those who live there, more than it becomes an issue for the people already driving on Pleasant Street, it's the one where someone comes onto Pleasant Street and is taking a left to go in to the space, that's the one that would be the most likely to cause a backup, back. That's the one that would be the most likely to cause a backup, back to the intersection. That's the one that needs to be just fleshed out why that won't be a problem, I guess, is that, that's the, that's the biggest one. Because if you're in the right lane, pulling in, there's no problem. When you get your turn, you just go in. When you're coming out, it's, you know, you hope nobody's on the cross section, but otherwise, it's like any other thing, you're waiting for the kindness of others, and you'll get out. It's just that left in, if there are no, no kind people, and people are parked on that, that cross section, that's the one that's going to be the backup problem.
Correct, but the, again, the volume of traffic is so small. The model says that the 95% ocu is .1 vehicle, that's how small it is. So it'll probably happen once an hour, you know, max. That's the morning, and bike fine the evening. Town Hall, those are northbound. In the evening, it's zero, so. And that's based on the projected, taken our 2021 counts, adjusting them upwards based on the old 2018 counts for COVID.
I don't know if you have it in there, because, Mr. Plunkett, again, because as I did last time with the number of units, as, actually, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Plunkett, the one you just said when you were talking about, the previously approved special permit. Do you have the number of trips in, in the evening when it was approved as the bank? Do you?
I do not have that. Do you have that, Doug?
Vehicle trips weekday in and out.
PM.
PM. Was, in was 42, and out was 43, for a total of 85.
And your number was?
Four and five.
Four and five, okay. So, because we're doing the comparisons, if this no longer is what we currently have it permitted for, that's a reduction potentially of a significant number. So yes, we are talking about what's on the site now, but we also have to consider what could be on the site when measuring out the potential parking, not parking, traffic issues. Just so everybody understands, you know, if this were not to go through, and it goes, reverts back to the bank option, and that goes through, you're talking about a potentially bigger traffic that we've already gone through the traffic discussion for and approved. So this, this is a down from there, significantly down from there. So a couple more units, a lot less cars, you know, again, balancing act, but I just wanted to make sure it's, it's sort of noted to everyone. Anything else? Nothing else right now?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. I had a call from a resident of town. Are we keeping the sycamore trees that are on site there at all? Or are they being relocated or removed or what? Hence the name Sycamore Hall, I believe, maybe with two sycamore trees on site.
I'm not sure which two of the sycamore trees, I don't think I have it noted on the plan. Some of the trees are staying, but some of the trees have to come down. So I'm, the street, there's a couple of next trees on the Pleasant Street side of the building, of the existing building that will be staying.
Looking at the plans, I think it may be between the two buildings and somewhere near the, near the benches that are proposed there.
There is one out on 138 that will, will, will stay, it's intended to stay.
Okay.
If anything, the sidewalk work, when they put the sidewalk in, might affect it, but...
Yeah, okay, just curious. You know, a resident called, and I was like, well, I'm not quite sure, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I said I would bring it up at the meeting, you know, so I mean, I don't know if the Sycamore Hall was named after the trees, or whether the hall was, they were put in purposely with the hall, so.
I don't think those trees are as old as the building, that's for sure. I mean, they're old, but they're not, they're not that old.
I'm not going to do it. Anybody in the, did you want to call? Okay, go ahead.
No, I have a question. Mr. Cram, do you think it'd be wise, maybe not needed, but wise, to put a sign, which we've all seen, on Pleasant Street between the western side of the lot line and the driveway? Do not block driveway. In other words, for a car coming down, they see a sign right in front of them, do not block driveway.
That would be a good recommendation.
Okay, very good.
Just belt and suspend it, because it's already, it's on the crisscross, you, you want the standing sign next to it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean, did that define? It's on the plans.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's on the layout sheet. It's a little bit before the.
Which sheet?
To the right. Sheet three of eight. That's right, because there's a driveway right at the lot point, so it's right before the driveway.
Good. I didn't want to see that.
I'm in line with the engineer.
Excellent. All right, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? You just step up to the mic, state your name and your address, and then the floor is yours.
Justin Marino, 17 Robinson Avenue. If I could just flip this back. First off, thank you for the fence amendment and as well as the storm drains, so thank you for taking that into consideration. Just last question I had was related to drainage. So last night, or early this morning, we had some pretty hard rains. On Robinson Ave, for example, there are three storm drains that were overwhelmed for a period of time before they could catch up. I'm still wondering, even with the two, if it's possible that this may be overwhelmed with something similar to what we had. I'm just concerned it's going to sheet flow over like you discussed over here. And my question is, is this curbed here, or what would happen there? And I'm wondering if there's a possibility of maybe like a small berm or something there just to hold it, to allow the storm drain to catch up in these type of events.
There is a six-inch curving on that edge, it's parking onto, hold the water back, so it'll have to slide up six inches before it gets over, it gets onto the grass.
Okay. And we're thinking six inches should be good to hold that and allow it to go through?
Yes, but I was thinking of putting a landscape berm with the, with the Alba Viz out, because a lot of them may address the comments from the town engineer about the not being under pressure.
Gotcha.
So I was actually going to put a little berm there, direct that towards that tree that's supposed to be, there, totally, right there.
Gotcha.
So that was on my, yeah, on my list of things I'm always to address, which is also, to be honest.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one?
Mr. Chairman, last time Mr. Marino was here, he asked about the bounds markers.
Yeah.
Are they going to be restored there? He brought that up, I don't know if it was lost, lost in the conversation or...
No, no, Matt did tell me about that. It was, I checked the survey notes, they had that it was loose back when they located it, so it must have, if it's not there, we'll put one back in.
Put one back? Great, okay, super, thank you.
Pull it up, just take it out. Thank you.
So is there anyone else who needed to come up? All right, so none? All right, anything else from any of the members of the board at this time? So, just for me, I, so I would take it then that with the last few things that you have to square up with Mr. Hoddeman, and a couple of changes on the plans that you need to put together, the fence, you know, the berm that you're talking about, those kind of things that probably anticipate closing this out, and, you know, we can get it drafted up, and closing it out at the next, the next meeting, I would suspect, unless something else comes up, unless any of the board members disagree.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Chairman.
So then I would...
Get the conditions done, right?
Yeah, get the conditions, waive his conditions, let's square it away. I would get on it sooner rather than later, obviously, our, our typical person is, is out of attorney right now, so obviously, they're probably a little more backed up in the office. So if you want to, you know, look like, look to try and close this out at the next hearing, the sooner the better to get all that stuff squared away. All right?
So will we be proceeding, if we get everything squared off with the town engineer, would we expect to get the draft of the?
Yeah, I would check in with Mr. Sadwick, because I mean, obviously, he's, he's taking care of the, you know, he's in charge of the department anyways, but obviously, the slack being picked up right now, and just confirm all that with him.
Perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue?
Yeah, no, we're just going to do the continuation. Yep. So do we have a motion to continue this to, so the 710 on September 27?
Why didn't we approve it tonight?
Except from outside, outstanding conditions.
Do we have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right. Moving on to agenda item K. Actually, you know what? Before we get out of this and get to K, we laid E, E 5 Florence Avenue on the table. Did anyone arrive for 5 Florence Avenue? I suspect that maybe whoever filed it thought they didn't maybe need to come, I think we'll have someone reach out, hopefully, just let them know. If by the end of the meeting, no one's come in, we'll just continue it to the next meeting, and then they can be contacted to come in and see us.
One minute.
Yep.
What were we, excuse me, what were we missing to not approve this tonight? I must have missed something.
The draft, the draft of the, of the decision.
Draft conditions for the permit?
Because we weren't done with it until tonight, so usually, the way we've been doing it is, from the time we've looked like we're finished, then they draft up everything, so we have everything in writing when we do the decision.
Oh, okay.
It's only the, like, the family suites and stuff that we've been...
No, I, I was just...
Just remember, too, we're still going out over the TV.
You know, no, the thing is, I was looking at Steve, we got the letter from Hoddeman that all the things were addressed, all the comments.
Well, no, just remember, we're still live. The first five were new. That's why they didn't say anything on the sheet that they had been addressed. They're, they're going to, they say they're going to address them, but as long as Mr. Hoddeman agrees with their address, then by the next meeting, then more than likely, we can, we'll be able to close out the hearing one way or another.
I know, I, you know, before, I was trying to understand.
So once the draft conditions are put together with the parties involved, and Mr. Sadwick, they'll present them at our next meeting, we'll review them, they'll be okay with them, and then we'll approve them, and then we'll...
You know, provided we decide to. Okay.
This next thing seems to be all set.
All right, moving on to agenda item K, Robbie Terrace, street acceptance recommendation, bond release as-built acceptance. Do we have anyone here for Robbie Terrace?
You don't look bad for no man.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Joe Oliverdi. And with me this evening is Mr. Robert Fontelli, we're the developers of Robbie Terrace Way. And we're here to discuss street acceptance and, more importantly, bond release.
Floor is yours, gentlemen.
Well, we received a letter from the town engineer, and it looks as if he's in complete support of the project as-built. So we submitted the as-built plan, and we're hoping that that be accepted, and we receive our bond back.
I'm all set. All right, Mr. Fowler, you're all set, Mr. Talia?
Yeah, all set, Mr. Chairman. Well, one thing I did want to know was, what is the amount of the bond release? We don't have that here.
The planning board has two bonds totaling $44,000. One $10,000 performance bond, and a construction bond of $34,000, for a total of 44.
Great, all right, thank you. I'm satisfied with the comments from Mr. Hoddeman and the as-bills, as discussed.
All right.
I'm all set.
All right, and the chair is all set as well. There's administrative action, so that's just for us. All right, so do them in two separate pieces. Do we have a motion on the release of the bond?
The bonds.
So, all right, so we have a motion to release the combined two bonds of $44,000, the 10 and the 34. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That takes care of the bond. Now, as to the street acceptance, Mr. Sadwick's letter said we can give an advisory opinion for the public hearing that the Board of Selectmen will have. Do we wish to give them a advisory recommendation?
Vote to recommend street acceptance.
All right, so we have a motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, is there... Thank you, guys.
Thank you, members.
Something we were supposed to vote to ratify, the special permit conditions have been satisfied?
I don't think so. I've never, I don't remember doing that before.
Yeah, I can remember that, but...
She's talking about us?
No, no, no.
Thanks again.
Okay, we're all set. Moving on to agenda item K2, 913 East Street sidewalk discussion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Jimmy Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. Here tonight on behalf of Joe Cataldo from 913 East Street. You recall, earlier this year, we were in front of you for a site plan, which was essentially a building addition to the existing garage. Through that process, a sidewalk was proposed, illustrated on the plan. And then on March 22nd, when the plan was approved, a waiver was granted to allow for either the construction of the sidewalk as shown on the plan, or for a fee in lieu. So we're here tonight to ask for consideration for this fee in lieu. So just to kind of give you the summary here of how we present this thing, U.S. subdivision rules and regulations, Section 9.5.5 specifically states that the fee should be based on the cost of construction of such wave sidewalks, not necessarily the cost for the town to construct an equal amount of sidewalks. This one's a little different anyhow, the cross-section changes as along the frontage, but essentially, there's about 292 feet of five-foot wide, bituminous sidewalk with no curb. There's four ADA accessible compliant concrete ramps at the two driveway entrances. And then on the furthest side to the, to the east, which is up against the railroad tracks, we have our own segment there, or additional, a different segment, which is 91 feet, five foot wide, vertical granite curving, and then a small segmented, segmental retaining wall to, so we don't have to disturb the existing detention basin. As we've talked about before on similar projects, we use DOT pricing as a guide, but because DOT pricing considers factors that private developers don't consider, it's always high compared to, to small private developments. What we've done in the past, successfully, is look at the actual unit prices, divide those by two, and we use the actual units in, in volumes associated with the, the construction. So we ran through this exercise on pages two and three. We basically have two different sections of sidewalks. There's a key map on page four that illustrates which section is which. But at the end of the day, when we go through our number, we're at $17,766.73. That's almost $46 per linear foot, and that has to do with the fact that there's about 100 feet that has vertical granite curving, and we have a segmental block retaining wall. If you recall, some of these other exercises that we've gone through recently, the number's been closer to $20 per foot, give or take, maybe 25. This is more, just more labor, there's more materials involved in this piece here. With that being said, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you.
We'll start with Mr. Delaney.
I'm all set with whatever he's trying to do. I just don't think the price of $55,000 is, is fair. You know, I think it's, the price should be more in line of what he quoted, around, around You know, for the most part, he's got, he's pricing out a granite curb, but I think if we've been using, we're going with asphalt curbs on some of the sidewalks that the town's been building. So, you know, I'm all, whatever, I'm all set with it.
Mr. Fowler?
I'd like to concur with Mr. Delaney, but my only question is, can we say with a certainty that we did the same kind of project over here?
Yep.
And this is what it cost? Or do you have, can you get something from Mr. Hoddeman agreeing with you?
I doubt I can do that. Yeah, I don't think I can do that. I think the approach that we've taken in the past is that this cost is supposed to be based on what it would cost the developer to do it.
Yep.
Not for the town to build that, right? So, and that's a big difference, because the town has a totally different process. There's prevailing wage and union rates, and it's a much different process than having, you know, the building addition, build equipment on-site, material on-site, labor's on-site, and then they build that out.
So what's your bottom line?
$17,800, plus or minus.
So the $55,000 is from who?
DPW. And if you look at that $55,000, that works out to about $140 a foot of sidewalk. Just, it's a... It's a different world, it's a different magnitude than what these guys would pay to build it themselves.
Do you have in your... Because I didn't see it. Traffic detail?
Traffic detail?
Yeah.
I did not? Nope.
That's gonna be a fixed figure.
Right, but the fee associated with that would only be, would be based on the 100-foot closest to the railroad tracks, because the remaining portion, the bigger portion, the 292 feet, is actually located off of the roadway. It's still in the right-of-way.
Right.
But it's not up against the pavement there.
Okay. So you don't foresee someone having a necessity of traffic to keep the two lanes going, east and west?
So that comes down to what the town would require us to do, right? So that's what it comes down, down to. To put that 100 feet of curving, that might be three days for one detail. You know, we're talking in the range of $1,500 bucks, maybe, maybe $2,000, something like that. I will note that, you know, in the DPW estimate, they carried $8,640, so I don't, I don't think anywhere near that. I didn't require yet.
Well, okay. Thank you. I'm all set.
Mr. Fattalia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess, if I'm reading this correctly, the difference is, you only want to pay $17,000, the town wants you to pay $55,000.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So you want to pay the fee in lieu of...
We would like, yeah, we'd like to pay the fee in lieu.
Okay. So you think Mr. Hardeman's figures are way out of line?
Yeah, I think DPW has, has a way to calculate fees for them to, to build improvements, sidewalks being one of them. They use DOT prices. Those DOT prices generally are inflated when you look at really small development projects, right? So DOT is gonna look at million-dollar projects, right? And a sidewalk is gonna be one piece to that. Much more complex projects all over the state, right? Could be in downtown Boston, could be in Lowell, could be in Florence. You have different considerations when those come in. The exercise, as I understand it, is how much does it cost? Would it cost my client to build that? Not how much is the DOT estimate to cost that, to build that. So that's how we arrived at our fee, and that's kind of based on some stuff that we've done in the past with you guys, where we looked at DOT, and we had a general understanding that those numbers ran about 50% higher.
Okay. I know we discussed this in the past. My recommendation was, rather than seeing this money just going into the account, per se, that we utilize it for the other side of the street somehow, some way. You know, so that the residents that are on the other side of the street take advantage of having sidewalks walking down East Street.
Didn't we consider any? There aren't any.
I know, but Mr. Chairman, what Mr. Fowler was saying is, let's, you know, earmark this money for sidewalks across the street.
But there are no residents there.
What's that?
There are no residents across the street from that.
Not directly across, but up a little ways.
All right.
As you come up towards the end of this project.
Didn't we do that for both this one and the one just up the way? Didn't they say it had to be within, I thought it was like 1,000, 1,000 feet left and right of where they were?
Do you remember that?
On the other side. I can't remember if it was put into this one.
Yeah.
But I thought, or did we start to... I thought we did it on multiple East Street projects.
A specific condition in the special permit?
For the, if, if there was a fee in lieu of, that it was going to be used in that area.
1,000 feet of the intersection of Carter Street and...
Yeah, it was either Carter Street or within, I think it was Carter Street, used as the, as the zero point. And it was something like, I don't know if it was like 1,000 feet one way or the other, so that the sidewalk money would be used in that area and not somewhere else. That way, if they wanted to take the sidewalk down the other side, they could, in order to connect it up into the neighborhood. So I know what Mr. Fattalia is saying. If we did not do that, I would not be opposed to putting that language in here with the fee, if we're doing it so that it's consistent with those other ones. I just can't remember without the permit in front of me. I don't remember if it's already in there. If it turns out it was, then it's built and suspended. If it's not, then we're just making it consistent with the, um, the other project, because we did the, we did at least one or two up there that had that conditional language to keep the money in the area, when it, if and when it were spent. So are we, does everybody feel comfortable doing that here in case we didn't do it before?
Sure. Well, I mean, I, my, in my opinion, and I stressed that in the past, was, rather than having it just going into the fund, I mean, the project's gonna be there, you know, and there's no sidewalks on the other side of the street where the residents could probably use them. I don't think anyone's gonna use a sidewalk in front of 913 East Street to walk. It's such a busy, traveled road. But residents on the other side of the street, and maybe walking down towards the skating rink area or Carter Street or something like that, may use that sidewalk, you know, and rather than walking on dirt from the side of East Street.
I thought too, like, I thought part of it was because there was some, it was part of the sidewalk planning, that something might be done at that intersection, and this was a way to use it to...
That's what we don't know.
Yeah.
So I thought if we moved it up, Stephen, I think that the discussion was, Mr. Hardeman was saying, at the corner of East Street and Carter Street, do you need a ADA ramp there or something, or you couldn't do it, something, so, you know, the idea was to move it up farther.
North and south or east and west? What is the East Street run? Is it north and south or east and west?
Well, it's east and west.
Excuse me. Didn't we, we take a lot of fees in lieu of? Did we, or did we not give the money to Hardeman to do Shawshin Street?
That's out of the general sidewalk fund, that's what Mr. Fowler and Fattalia is saying. In this case, it'll still go into the sidewalk fund, but then it will have the limitation that it would be used on East Street.
Right. But wouldn't it be better used to finish the sidewalks somewhere, instead of having them halfway up Shawshin Street to complete Shawshin Street? Wouldn't that money be better used?
If they have enough money?
Better used. I'm not talking about putting bits and pieces in on East Street. I just think if they took the money and they could finish the street, in other words, right now Shawshin Street is coming up short. It's not gonna go all the way to the end. The money that is collected might get it to the end.
I thought that money was, was in place, Mr. Fowler, and you already pushed to complete Shawshin, wasn't it?
You already have that.
Plus, in this case, the reason I was agreeing with Mr. Fattalia here is because we did, we did the exact same thing on at least one other project on East Street with the same kind of limiting language. I forget what the name of it is, but it's, it's the one that they're gonna do, the phasing. They had the phasing.
American gutter, right?
Yeah. Yes.
American gutter, right?
Right, where they're the phasing. We did the same thing, and we basically had it, it was like, you know, you know, up and down East Street, 1,000 feet from the Carter Street intersection is where it needed to be used.
All right. So, Mr. Hanley, I'm getting back to the numbers that you're discussing. Is there any, any room for inflating your number to become, have a happy medium?
Well, I don't write the check, so it's tough for me to say yes.
Yeah, I understand.
But what I do know is that you guys set it, right? That's what the bylaw says, is that you, that we ask for a fee and you set the fee. So if that was what was necessary, then that's, you know, it's totally your call.
Sure. Board members, any comments?
He showed the numbers on, on his side.
He's put the numbers out there. Who knows what he wants?
If, if...
I think he's good. I think he's good with the numbers.
Doesn't mind? Because I was gonna say it when it got to my turn anyways. I was already gonna say something about moving it to, you know, an even 20 anyways. I don't know how far you were looking to go.
I was gonna say 25. It's almost halfway between 17 and 55. Make it even, and that number is gonna be allocated for East Street, for the residents that are on the other side, that are gonna have to be putting up with the construction at 913 East Street and the American gutter going forward, so.
I'd make a motion, we increase it to $20,000.
Second. I, I mean, I can live, I can live with it, with that, just because, I mean, looking at the way we're computing these numbers, we just did the same thing down on Marshall, we just did it, and that's basically how we've been going with this, is if you can justify...
The street as well, right? We did something up a living street, right?
So...
So it was a bonus contention.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, we have to keep doing this every single, you know, every time, or we're just gonna have to decide we want a sidewalk somewhere if we do. But for this, and I think for this one, for the, I can live with the 20, as Mr. Fowler thinks to be able to, and Mr. Delaney.
Yeah, I'm all, I can, you know...
So, and then obviously with the limitation as well, that will, it'll be used on East Street.
Right.
Within 1,000 feet of the Carter Street intersection.
Heading towards...
Left, right, up, down, east, west, north, south, however that runs, whatever.
Is that all right?
Is that gonna work?
Yes.
From you? Okay.
All right, so then if that's the case... So what exactly is this? Because we gave them the option, so what do, what are we, are we just making a motion to clarify the, I mean, or is this a non-substantial change? I'm not even sure what we would call this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's discussed.
We haven't had to do that.
It's not a change.
So it's just a clarification?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, so I guess we'll take it as a motion to clarify.
Right.
And accept that fee.
At the petitioner's request, they are now using the fee in lieu option.
Yes.
And this is to set the fee.
Yep.
All right. That's it. Okay, so that's the motion, and the motion is to set the fee at $20,000, with the provision just discussed about the limitation for where that $20,000 could be spent on East Street, as we did. So there's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, so that should take care of it.
Thank you very much.
If we need something different, we can deal with it later.
Okay.
I would say just check and make sure that that gets you everything you need, and that you're not gonna get held up later, that that was sufficient, the way we did that.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, to your point before, maybe, you know, you may have been correct that we should have accepted the as-built. So I'm gonna go back to Administrative Action K-1.
Yep.
And just take a motion to accept the as-built as well, just to be clear. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
For the second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. That should take care of all the administrative. So that brings us back to, have a motion to remove 5 Florence Avenue from the table.
So moved.
Have a motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So now 5 Florence Avenue is back on.
Making a motion to continue, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second, because I think we tabled it, so in order to do this right, first, can I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now, as the petitioner for 5 Florence Avenue was not able to attend this evening, they may not have known that they should have, I'm not sure, I suggest that we continue this to our next meeting at 7:15. And then if we, we've asked that the office contact the petitioner to let them know that they should attend the meeting.
Yep.
Um, for this matter. All right, so we have a motion to continue 5 Florence Avenue to 7:15 on September 27th.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let's see, so moving on to old business. Any old business anyone wishes to discuss?
Did we do, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, old business. I have a...
Correspondence. Yeah, we'll get to the...
I have a bit of a concern with why we moved the administrative items from the front of the bill, front of the meeting to the back.
So these ones here are, if you got your stuff in too late, after, I think it was the Wednesday cutoff that they were using, we had this conversation a few meetings back, that this way, the people who have their regular hearings...
That's the only time it's done.
It's, I think it's that, and I think we were moving, like, those initial discussions into the second half of the administrative. That way, people don't get bogged down waiting to do the hearings and to, you know, come in and speak while they're waiting for us to have one of those preliminary discussions on a project, or anyone who submitted late. So if you submitted after they used, I think we were using Wednesday as the cutoff, or whatever it was, if you missed that and you came in after that, we push you to the end so as other people don't get forced to wait longer while we have 15 administrative items, because people can put those in so late, we didn't want to encourage them to continue doing that.
Right.
This way, it's sort of a little, a little whack to them to have to wait around a little longer if they wait too long to put it in.
That's the reason, that's fine.
That was it. Yep.
Thought it was a time factor to him, Mr. Fowler.
Yeah.
How much time it takes us to get to the very end, so these, these people that had a 7:20, um...
If really necessary.
A 7:20 appointment is now being here at 9 o'clock because the administrative action was, was in front.
Not, not sitting in the office, not knowing when these things come in.
Right.
I, I look at Robbie Terrace Way, and I know that's been in there for a while.
Yeah.
So I was wondering why it was at the end of the meeting, and you gotta sit here all, all night for a five-minute conversation.
Any other old business?
No.
Any new business? Seeing none. Correspondence. We have one piece of correspondence in our packet from, or it was forwarded from, I'm not sure if this is from Mr. Montori or Mr. Sadwick, but it, it is in reference to the 300 Ames Pond Drive. I guess at this point, it is a filed 40B project up there by Hanover.
Yep.
And it is requesting any comments that any of the board members might have to make, you know, based on the submission. I don't think they're looking for any other comments the board members might make, just on the project.
We always try to keep it a friendly process.
Yes, a friendly process. Because I believe, I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think in this version, they have to come here at all.
No, they don't.
So that's only in the lip program, where they would come in just to meet with us,